Concerning the sweeping of the tar patch.
Yes, we met with them last week just on our quarterly meeting and they said their sweeper's in the shop, but it should be out this week and they'll get him swept up.
Okay, thank you.
We had our wastewater treatment board meeting yesterday and a couple of things I wanted to bring up. There's a, the plant's going well out there. They, one of the issues they have though, they're having trouble with one of their weather well. It's when they use the water heavy, it's pumping sand and they're concerned about it. Eric Bonzo expressed a desire to possibly, the other hat I wear is on the water conservancy district and we have a line on 2300 West that goes, Kit, I don't know if you can bring up that picture, but we have a line that goes down that 2300 West to within about three quarters of miles of the sewer plant and it's a 10-inch line. And he asked what the potential would be to extend that line down to the wastewater treatment plant to tie onto so they have a redundancy in regards to water. They're worried about their well. I don't know what they can do, but that's something they're concerned about. We're, as a district, we're working on the flood diversion or the diversion structure out west for the recharge project out at Lake Quichpaw and we need some riprap. We've got the diversion structure poured. They're waiting for it to cure. When can they backfill Tim? Friday? The Friday they can backfill that?
And Watson said yes.
You gonna introduce yourself for that comment?
No.
Have there been more than like than not at the head?
You would've, you would've got it. So, but we need, we need quite a bit of riprap. I don't know how much we're gonna need, but we need some riprap. We've got some salt rock they hauled from the aquatic center, stock piled up to the Bullock pit. And like to look at maybe some options of the city maybe helping to lay that pipe down 2300 West, maybe looking at, in trade for using some of the riprap, the rock we have in the city, trading for a connect, water connection down there. Just working out some deals with the district to make that happen.
What does the sewer plant need water for?
Well, they water their lawns, they clean things. They, they use a fair amount. They have a two-inch connection. That's about a $12,000 charge in the district to do a two-inch meter hookup. So, we'd like to propose on a district level to maybe do some trading and so we can maybe work out some of those details, maybe make a proposal. The other thing I had was the, our flood mitigation project, the irrigators want to take most of that water right now. And so our project is pretty much finished for the year. The snowpack's gone down quite a bit and so the fear of that's subsided. But we've realized as a side benefit, a lot of recharge, we put about 2,000 acre feet in that gravel pit this year, which is enough to supply 2,000 homes for a year. An average home uses about a, about an acre foot a year. And so that's been a great thing. We, I talked to Brent Hunter, who's the chairman of our conservancy district, and he said, "We're gonna have a lot of water in May. It's gonna come down really fast and heavy and much more than the irrigators can use." And I approached, did some research on the gravel pits in the valley, Sun Rock. They're, they're not near having any, any available. Mel Clark, he's still using his pit. The only other option we have, Phil Smith right there on the airport road. We own the property up close to the road that he's leasing from us where he's mining gravel. But he's got an older pit, the back of his property that we've talked to him and he's willing to let us use that pit to do some recharge. And it's right next to the canal. So, we've got a price from him to do, to cut through the bank, do some, some riprap, a head gate, a valve. And we've, I talked to the county, the district in Cedar City. It's about $10,000 and we'd split that three ways. So for about 3,500 bucks each, we'd, we'd have another recharge project. It's, it's not as big as, and as beneficial as the others, but it'll, it'll hold a lot of water. And so we're, if we can get, we've gotta get one easement from Western Rock, Staker, their parent company, but I think that that's gonna go through. So we're looking at maybe doing that if, if everything lines up, you know, pretty quickly. And then we can take advantage of some of that high water this next month and recharge there. So, Kit, I don't know if you can show that pit right there. So that's, that's Airport Road, right? So there's a freeway right there and there's the pit right there that Kit's circling, the one up front where we own. And one thing that Phil's willing to do, I talked to him just before this meeting, I talked to Kit a little bit about it. One reason Phil is mining the pit up by the road is because we own it as a city and we're leasing that property to him. So, and he's already into that lease away, so he wants to mine that out before his lease runs out. And I said, "Well, it'd be beneficial to us if you mined the one in the back so we have more capacity for water storage." And he said, "Be happy to if we could extend the lease on the front part." And he said, and so I, I would like to make a proposal. I asked him how long, I, you know, I think he has a 20-year lease. I asked him, in that back, in that rear pit, he's got a lot of dirt, piles of dirt in there where they've washed gravel that they need to get rid of. And he said for a 10-year lease, he'd go in and then clean that up. He said, "It's gonna cost about $30,000 to double the size of that pit to clean all the, all the sand and dirt out of it, but it would, it would make a recharge better." And I said, "I don't know if we can help pay for that, but what if we extended the lease longer?" He said, "Well, if we could go another 20 years on that lease, we might have to negotiate some rates." But he would actually clean that pit out. We could use it for recharge for two or three months out of the year. When it dries out, he would mine that and make it as big as possible over the years. And we could recharge, he could mine, bounce back and forth from the pits and then-
Just make it bigger every year.
Make it bigger every year. And he's got some big projects coming. Well, he said he's got one project that he might take 200 tons out of there, or 2,000 tons of gravel out of there, which would make it a lot bigger. And so we could, there's another option right there. It's right next to the creek bed. It's, it's gonna be really expensive to do. So that's another option we have. So, that's something we're working on.
Great work.
All right, are there any other comments or anything? Let's see. This Friday is SHU graduation, so there will be tons of people in town for that. Thursday is the groundbreaking for the new business building tomorrow at 10 o'clock, I think, 11 o'clock?
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock. So, and with that, we'll move on to staff comments, starting with Chief Phillips.
Mayor, Council, Staff, Mike Phillips with the Fire Department. I'm here to introduce three of our new battalion chiefs. I'll have them come up with their wives right now. 15 months ago, they started the process. They went through an interview and skills and then they were shadowed by existing battalion chiefs to teach them the skills of the trade. After that, they went through another interview and skills test and out of the group, these are the three that are moving forward as battalion chiefs for the Cedar City Fire Department. So, I'll have them come right up here and have their wives pin their badges on them and come through and shake the council.
If you need to take a picture, feel free to come on up here, onto the-
Then of course I'll have them introduce their families. And then the other group that's hiding in the back, you guys need to come up and introduce yourselves, because the mayor will make you. Really quickly, we had a question from Tom Jett. He was curious what a battalion chief does. These are the, the guys that run the fire ground operations and make all the decisions after the first arriving engine company gets there. So they're the one that keeps the process going and, and keeps the command moving forward. So, anyway, if you wanna pin your badges on and introduce your families and-
Chief, how many battalion chiefs are there?
So there is a total of seven. We've had some retirements and people moving on, so we needed to replace the command staff and the organization. Okay, if you guys wanna go over and shake the council's hand, then come introduce your family.
And you know, the bravest people are the wives, because they're always having to hear that thing go off and send their husbands away. And so we, we truly appreciate them. When are you gonna get the wives a badge, chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Nick Howell. I've been with the Fire Department. This is year 17 for me. So, this is my better half, Kate, and my two children, Madeline and Mila, six and three.
Mayor, City Council, I'm Mike Kenfield. This is my wife, Michelle. I've been on the department 17 years like Nick.
Mayor, City Council, I'm Chad Barnes. This is my wife, Becky, and I've been on this department for about six years now. Thank you.
Thank you. What are these stars here, chief? The service, what, one for every five?
Mayor and Council, Lowell Swanson with the Cedar City Fire Department.
Mayor, Council, Greg Gorlovsky, Cedar City Fire Department. I wanna re-invite everybody to Life Safety Week. We're the third day. Mayor's been there, so again, I wanna re-invite the rest of the council that comes.
Do we get to jump through the window?
Absolutely.
Mayor, Staff, City Council, Travis Douglas, Cedar City Fire Department.
Mayor, Council, I'm Wyatt Shirts with Cedar City Fire Department.
I guess, Mayor, Council, Lenore Warby, and I'm always out of uniform. That's a problem. But I, I'm the assistant chief, but one of the, and Mike did say, I brought out to say something. And these volunteers that we have, all three of these are volunteers. And so, over the last 17 years, and Chad was with a previous department, so he's got quite a few years in the, in the fire service. These guys have donated a lot of time and a lot of effort. And I just wanna congratulate them for the effort over the years. And we're really glad to have them with us and we have a lot of confidence in their abilities to manage the fire ground. So, thank you and we appreciate all your support and giving us the tools to work and protect our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
All right, we'll now move on to Jonathan with our review of the 2016 water report.
Jonathan Stathis with the City Engineering Department. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just like to give a brief summary of the water report for, for last calendar year. I put a, I put the text of the report in the council packets this week. The full report is on the city's website for the public to look at. The first, first slide we, we have here, it shows the per capita water use. That's the amount of water used per person per day. It went up a little bit last year. We had somewhat of a dry summer last year, so we had more water, more outdoor usage. But basically over the last seven years, we've been pretty consistent in the 220 to 230 range. So, we feel like we're doing pretty well as far as water conservation. We still have the daytime watering restrictions during the summer. Plus, we try to do education. And then with the rate structure that we have, we feel like we're doing a pretty good job with water conservation. Of course, there's always room for improvement. Please, please stop me if you have any questions while we're going through this. In terms of the water rights, we've, we purchased, or we acquired, the city acquired 131 acre feet during the previous year. So we're up to almost 20,000 acre feet that the city owns, which, which was a total of about 40% that was used last year. We also look at the 40-year outlook period. So, based on the state projections, the population is projected to grow to about 74,000. And so we currently own enough water rights to cover that, which is, which is good. Another thing we've, we've been doing is going through all, all of the city's water rights. And we've, we've listed all of those rights by priority date. We've had a few discrepancies between what, between what our records showed and what the state's records showed. And we're trying to work out some of those discrepancies and make sure that we've got accurate records on all of the city's water rights. But we feel like we've got a pretty good handle on that now and we know where we're at in terms of the priority dates. And the reason that's important is because the state's working on doing the groundwater management plan. And so we're, we wanna make sure that all of the city's water rights are protected. In terms of the power costs, the power costs went up a little bit last year and we're, basically, we're, we're seeing an increase each year. One of the benefits of recharge, we, we hope, is that if we can get the aquifer to stabilize, then that'll help on power costs, because we're not having to pump from as, as deep as we are now. So hopefully we can get that under control and hopefully that'll help with power costs as well. The aquifer trends, we are still seeing a drop in, in the aquifer. The drop last year was about two feet, which is a little bit less than what we've been seeing in the past. Over the past several years, we've been seeing a decrease of about three feet. One thing we've, we've started to add in this year's report is the amount of, of water that's recharged at the airport ponds that Kit's been doing for several years. He was estimating about 800, 1,800 acre feet during the winter. And then Paul was saying that he's recharged about, what, 2,000 acre feet this spring. So, so I think we're doing a really good job with the recharge. So that's gonna help with the aquifer, aquifer declines.
Jonathan, it may pay just to mention that because of the recharge that Kit's started, what was it, about, what, 10 or 11 years ago?
Something like that.
So the, the water table around the airport where Kit started recharging 10, 11 years ago has risen 20 feet. And that's a big deal. So, and I don't know if you were gonna, you were gonna talk about the potential well out there.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that. Yeah, that's, no, it's, and the Quichpaw, well, let me go to this slide. We've been monitoring the, the aquifer levels in the Enic. So this would be the Enic area and then the Quichpaw area, which is our, currently the city's two main wellfields are in those areas. So we've been watching those declines through the years. And the conservancy district is, they're working on recharge projects in both of those areas. And, and on the Enic area, that's been very successful. And then hopefully we can get the Quichpaw recharge project going soon. But anyway, we're, we are still seeing declines in these areas. And obviously, any, any recharge we can do is, is gonna help that situation. And this is a list of some of the projects that we're, we're looking at. These are the projects that were completed last year, the Kitty Hawk Drive Water Line. That was, that was an important water line to get finished up. That was, it was really undersized and they've been seeing quite a bit more development out in that area. So that was good to get that project done to help the fire flow in that area. Coal Creek Road Project was a really important project that we were, that we got done last year. We had quite a bit of problem with, we had some problems with the water lines feeding down towards Coal Creek Road, because, because they were all dead end lines. And we'd have problems with freezing periodically during the winter. And so, as part of the Coal Creek Road Improvements Project, we were able to loop all of those water lines in that area. And so that's been a big benefit to have that done. We also finished drilling the Quichpaw Well, number one. And now we're working on getting it equipped and getting it, moving the wellhouse over it. And so, we're looking at getting that done this summer. And then we were able to finish up the SCADA project. The SCADA is how the water department monitors the wells and the tanks. They can monitor all those remotely. Some of the projects we're looking at doing this year, the South Tank, we've talked about that. They're actually, they actually finished painting the floor this morning in the South Tank. So, we're hoping to have that back online within the next week to two weeks. And that's actually gone pretty well with the work that they had to do to go in and, and fix some of the problems in that tank. But we're looking at having that done within the next two weeks. I'll just mention this project here, the test well near the airport. We're looking at, in conjunction with the USGS, we've done some testing of the water, the water quality in that area. And it's turned out to be pretty good water. And so we're looking at, like Paul said, where the, the water tables come up in that area, we're looking at that as a good place for, for a future wellfield in that area. So, we're looking at the south end of the airport to drill a test well and see, see what the drawdown is and then get, take some more water samples and see if, see if we can drill a new well in that area. And then we've got some other water line projects we're gonna be doing. And we're still working on, we're still working with a developer on building a new water tank up above the Ashtown Forest area. Just, just a quick update on the water situation going into this summer. I just looked this morning, the snowpack in this area is about 75% of normal. We've already lost some, some of the snowpack, just because of the normal runoff period, but there's still quite a bit that needs to come down. We're still doing the water restrictions during the daytime hours. And people have been pretty good to, to honor those restrictions. And I think it's been a big help to us, not only for water conservation, but also when managing the water system. We're continuing to encourage water conservation. And then we're, we've been working with the Division of Water Rights as they've started the, the groundwater management plan for, for the valley. So that's basically the report for this year. Everything, all the city's wells are operational, ready to go for the summer. So everything looks good. And we're, seem like we're ready for the summer season.
Only an old geezer, but I enjoyed that report a lot more than I enjoyed La La Land.
So Jonathan, one, one, one thing that's kind of exciting, you know, you, we're doing well with conservation, better all the time. The unfortunate thing is, no matter how much we conserve, as important as it is, is it's, agriculture uses about 80% of the water in our valley. So as much as we conserve it, doesn't make as much difference we would hope. The thing that's exciting is Brett Hunter, our chairman, he's experimenting, we've all seen these pivots, the water, the hay, and the spray nozzles. When that misses that water, they figure they lose about 30% of that to the infinite evaporation. But Brett's experimenting with some things where they're lowering their, their, what do you call it? The nozzle. They're lowering those down closer to the ground and using more of a droplet. So it's more of a droplet, so it doesn't evaporate as bad. And then there's also some systems out now that they're actually screwing a, a drip line. And it drags behind the pivot and puts the water right on the ground. So there's no, you know, so it, it applies it directly. And so, their, agriculture's making some headway on conservation. And so if they conserve 30% of their water, that's about 4,000 acre feet in our valley, which is more than half of our deficits. So, there's some exciting things going on with agriculture and conservation.
Well, it's a big benefit to irrigators, because they don't have to pump as much and saves them money.
Oh, big time.
Yeah, anything we can do to encourage that is, would be great. And then of course, the recharge projects are gonna be a big benefit as well, so.
Thank you for that. Thanks for your work, Jonathan.
Thank you, Jonathan.
The tank, the tank repair going along well?
Going very well. Yeah, like I said, they've, they put the last bit of paint on this morning on the floor. And so now they just have, they have to wait for a cure time. So they wait about 10 days and then we can start filling the tank. Yep.
Very good.
It's going very well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, then we'll now have Danny.
Good evening, Mayor and Staff. Have a-
You still need to introduce yourself.
I, 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 good evening, yeah, but I didn't introduce myself. Danny Stewart, Director of Economic Development. Thank you for hearing us tonight. We've got another business introduction and we're gonna take care of introducing two businesses in our downtown that are really unique with the same ownership. And happy to welcome this evening Christopher and Samantha Wilmes. We've invited them to take three to five minutes to talk about their companies that they have here in our downtown.
Hey, everyone. I'm Chris. So we own Poppin' Sweets and Palette Creamery. We just opened Palette Creamery two weeks ago and we opened Poppin' Sweets, I guess, in June of last year. Poppin' Sweets is a, sort of a pop and candy shop. We kinda specialize in imported candy and-
Yeah, man.
Weird confectionery. And then Palette Creamery is a from scratch creamery. So we make everything in-house, even the caramel, the marshmallow cream, all that stuff we make there. And then, yeah.
Do you want to tell them where both are located?
Oh, yeah. So, Poppin' Sweets is 68 North Main, which is like, just-
Right over there.
And then Palette Creamery is 255 North Main, which is where the old French bakery used to be, next to the old Depot Grill.
Oh.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's where they're located and that's what we're doing. And we, we love creating new businesses, so you'll probably hear more from us in the future.
So what are you making there? Is it ice cream, yogurt?
So, yeah. So at Palette Creamery, we make from scratch ice cream. And then we do crepes, cookies and brownies.
What could be wrong with that?
The ice cream is delicious.
So, so that's open now?
Yeah, so we opened two weeks ago.
Tell me about the hole in your sidewalk. What's the deal with that?
So I, it's not my building.
Yeah.
And so I-
So if I just showed up there one afternoon with the trowel and a little concrete, is anybody gonna care?
No, I will be-
I've got some in my garage I wanna get rid of.
I will, I will be so happy. I, we, yeah, that would be-
Okay.
That would be very awesome.
All right. Don't call the cops on me.
Yeah, I definitely won't. I'm so sorry about that.
Love your place.
I'm glad.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I appreciate Chris for coming. And it's pretty amazing to have one new business in the downtown, but to have two like this, they're, they're open later in the evening at Poppin' Sweets. And also for families, I anticipate because of these two businesses, that our dental business will increase in town as well. But thank you.
All right, are there any other staff comments?
Gym memberships.
Okay, wonderful. Then we will move on to our public agenda with our public comments. If there is anyone that would like to address the council, now is your turn. Oh, yes.
My name is Robert Ellens. I'd like to address the council area.
Okay.
I run the concessions out in the arena. And due to some health problems, we didn't know if we're gonna be able to do the concessions. So, I was told it would take me six months to do, if I could do anything. That didn't happen. I'm doing quite well. We did not renew our, our license and because we didn't know if we were gonna be able to do it or not. And so we have the penalties on here. And when I came in to pay it, they told me that I would have to talk to you guys about taking these penalties off on the, on the license that I do. You don't get a large profit out there. It's more a labor of love than-
So what's the general nature? If you have a business, you, you pay the license every year and if you don't pay it on time, there's a penalty?
50% on February 15th and 100% on April 1st.
And it, it would be considered an ongoing business? He couldn't say, "Well, I'm, I shut down my business and I'm starting up and I need a new license."
You could've. You could've closed it. You can close your luck this, and then you can deactivate them or anything, but we didn't tell you how this happened.
So will you give the council an idea how much the penalty?
I think it's $56, I believe.
Yeah.
Penalty is $56.
Penalty is?
So it's $112 is his total bill.
And this concession is run during which, which event?
We're out there for every event that goes out. I mean, sometimes we gross $25.
But, but it's during Heritage, the Heritage Festival and-
Yeah, well, not the Heritage Festival.
Oh, in, in with the arena.
They have the rope things, you know, barrel races and.
With this.
We have an agreement. I don't know what the.
Yeah. This has to come before a public hearing.
So if you want to consider, you can't vote on it today. We would need to publish it for a public hearing and bring it back for a work meeting. By the time we publish it, we'll be in the, probably the
It'll be the middle of May.
Meeting in May. What's at the second work meeting away? So it'll be about the 17th. If that's what you'd like us to do, we'll get it published.
Can he suspend his license now?
Are you looking to start up again this year then?
It's a little late to say I'm out of business when he's came out publicly and says he's in business.
Can we, can we spread out payment for the times that he's actually in business and making some, some money to pay the basic fee for the license and the penalties over a period of time or?
The structure we have right now, if he pays it before the next round of penalty, is he, is there another round of penalties in June or was that April?
I, I guess what I'm asking is, were you in business all through the winter? Did you, were, when, when was the last time you were out there selling stuff as a business? The Home Show Inn?
That was just last.
Last spring garden.
Spring garden. Oh, the Spring Garden. Okay.
That's when I got Clarence from the doctor to go.
Okay. But before that?
Before that, it was back when, November or?
November.
Renan?
That would have been covered by last year's license.
Around how many businesses do we have that fall under the penalty? Yeah, that, did you hear that one? That there were around 400 business license that end up having this penalty situation?
Yeah.
Well, I can go ahead and pay it. I mean.
Well, that's the challenge is we, we understand your plight and the situation and appreciate your service out there. But the problem is if we, it's a slippery slope.
Right.
And then we, we've usually been very stingy on these things because it creates a real problem because then you start trying to pick and choose who you waive the fees for. So it's, it's just probably in the best interest for the amount of money to pay it. But yeah, I don't know if we could get creative with reducing your rent that much for a little bit. I don't know. I maybe work something out. It's, it's just a tough deal. Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate you, what you're doing.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Want to make sure I don't miss someone if there is. No? Okay, then we will move on to our business agenda with our public portion first with our consent agenda. Item number one, approval of minutes dated March 22nd and April 12th, 2017. Approval of bills dated April 17th and 21st, 2017. Approval approved vicinity plan for the townhomes on 300 West PUD. Approved bid and contract for Marshall Evans in the amount of $63,796.85 for the LED streetlight retrofit phase one project. Are there, does the council have questions on any of those items? And if not, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda, is read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We will move to our action agenda with item number five, a public hearing to consider fee waiver for the Iron County Search and Rescue. And we, yeah, I was going to say with.
Okay, so search and rescue does their carnival. They've been holding it for the last few years on the parcel of property we own east of the library and north of the Elks Lodge. Talked to Robbie about this and we've, we have hooked up a water connection for them just out of a meter. And in the time they've been operating on our property, we have never charged them for the water. Takes our staff about 30 minutes to hook it up and 10, 15 minutes to take it down. They've asked for a waiver of any rental fees. Well, we don't really have a rental fee. So we, I don't think we ever charged them a rental fee. They would like us to waive the business license fee, which is ballpark of 300 a day, $900 total. So that's their request.
Their carnival runs from May 18th through the 20th and they would want to start setting up on kind of May 14th, 15th, somewhere in there.
And that was due to that because some of the money they raise goes to, I mean, in the past.
Whatever they raise goes to.
Goes to the, doesn't some of it benefit our police?
They.
There's a policeman.
Lieutenant Mellett, can you enlighten us on that or?
Hey, you're gonna have to come up here. I already can guarantee you're gonna have to come up and ask some questions.
Search and Rescue has requested a fee waiver and one of the rationales they've used in the past is some of the efforts that they put forth are funded by this carnival they hold. And some of those efforts in turn benefit our police department.
Keith Mellett, Lieutenant with Police Department. Yes, that's, that's correct. They help us on many, many times, help locate people that have been lost or whatever. So we would support that.
I think this is one of those things where we've, we like, so we've been very stingy on these kinds of things, but where they donate so much of their time and there's so many volunteers and they do such a great service for us. I think in the past we have, haven't we done this quite often, waived these fees for them?
Really? Last year we didn't, the year before we did.
Last year we did?
Last year we did not. The year before we did. They didn't ask last year.
There was something gone wrong with their, their organization there for a while that may have thrown them off.
The year before when they asked, we waived it.
Yeah. I mean, they, they work on a shoes.
That's, that's the only people they work for, isn't it? I mean, they don't go off and work for the Walmart search and rescue or, I mean, it's, it's us.
Yeah. It's the county and us. Anywhere we need help with, they, they're willing to come out and help us.
They do in fact, in, in this past year, how many times would you say they had been, they've been called upon? Could you say?
I don't know. I don't know how many, but they, they also have skills with rope teams and rescue and that sort of thing that they, up around the Red Hill, when we've had people fall or have injuries, they've helped us get those people to safety and not. So we're supportive of them.
Is that right, Brian?
I think they do the fire road too.
Yeah, the fire.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we do.
Oh, no, 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 no. We can't do that yet. We have to have a public hearing.
I'm sorry.
All right.
I got ahead of myself.
I know. Sorry about that. Okay. Do you have anything else to add? Okay. Then thank you so much.
Thanks, Keith.
Then we will open our public hearing on this item. If there is anyone that would like to address the council related to the fee waiver of the business license and connecting the water. Now is your opportunity to address the council. Okay. Seeing no one, then we will close the public hearing. And now.
I can go. Okay. Well, I think this is the only one I ever remember really waiving in my years of service, but I, I think based on their volunteer service and, and what they give to our community. I mean, they've, in the past, I know we've, we've cert, we've helped them financially in our budget. So we can either let them give us money and then we give it back. But I think, I think under the circumstances for the service they give us and they work on a shoestring budget, I think we ought to approve it.
So is that your motion to approve that? Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Did you, you approved it? Fred?
I was an aye.
Okay.
I was thinking about getting lost.
I just couldn't see with your hands over your mouth. I wanted to make sure.
He was.
Okay.
He was in La La Land.
All right. Item number six, consider approval of an ordinance disconnecting property located in the West Valley subdivision. And Tyler's not here.
This is officially not an island.
Couple lots.
Yes.
That would disconnect, it would be out of the city.
Correct. Yeah, they would go out of the city.
Will you state your name?
My name is Keith Christianson. Greetings.
Thanks, Keith.
Council and staff. We, is anybody not familiar with what we've proposed?
I read through it last night, but remind me where this is exactly. I.
This is, Equestrian Point is right here to the east of where we are.
Okay.
Over here, that's the city boundary line right there.
Okay.
This property here is all county, all the way up around here, all the way out through there. Our request is to disconnect this lot and these slots from the city and return them back to the county.
Practically speaking, it just helps you avoid
Yeah.
all those costs.
All the costs, the city ordinances would require that if I build a barn and get a building permit for my barn, I have to improve the street, widen it out to 60 feet, but in the curb and gutter. And that adds somewhere between 45 to $60,000 cost onto my building of barn. Other people want to build houses out there and, and that's an additional cost to them. Also, we feel that it, the, the only city service that comes down here is the new sewer line they installed right down to there last summer. And so the, there's no amenities provided by the city for that area anyway. So we, we'd like to just avoid those costs and, and kind of continue the appearance. Like I, I mentioned last week, if, if this guy builds a house and improves his, his curb and street, and then you go down here three blocks and I build my barn and I improve my curb and street, then you got all this area in between that's remains the same. So continuity of appearance as well as, as just the, the costs of developing those lots is why we would like to do this.
So do we have to give back the engagement ring?
You get to keep that part. All right. Are there any other questions from the council? If not.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have to have a roll call where this is an ordinance. We will start with Councilwoman Hartley.
Aye.
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 Right. Thank you.
The divorce you finally.
All right. Consider approval of an ordinance amending the general land use plan for property located along the west side of 800 West from Harding Avenue to 170 North.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and Staff. Tim Watson with Watson Engineering. We have two items on the agenda tonight. As item seven and eight, item seven being a consideration for the amendment to the general land use. Item number eight being the rezoning from R3, excuse me, R2 to mixed use. That's our request. The general land use has this is, I want to say it's medium density with what is currently zoned. And so our request is mixed use, which will allow us to have a little bit more flexibility in the proximity to 200 North and also the university. And we are only requesting one side of the street and they are all contiguous from the highway service zoning at 200 North down to Harding Avenue.
All right.
Any questions?
The whole neighborhood has signed up and we discussed.
No, no, not the whole neighborhood. The, only the, only the seven properties that we are trying to rezone.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We will start with Councilman Adams.
Aye.
Before I vote, I have, I have a family member that owns property there. I want to disclose that, but I vote aye.
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 Okay. We will move to item number eight, consider approval.
You're going to say you disown him, not disclosing.
I might do that too.
Wow, you were on one tonight. You're funny. All right. Item number eight, consider approval of an ordinance changing the zone from R2 to MU for property located along the west side of 800 West from Harding Avenue to 170 North.
Motion to approve.
What, I want Tyler, or wow, I want Tim to have to say some things.
Thank you.
You're not excused.
We made the motion.
Fred rolls.
Fred, and then?
Second.
Second, we'll start with Councilwoman Hartley.
Aye.
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 You so got off easy tonight.
Thank you again.
All right.
Hey, how's the subdivision coming up there? When's it going in? Sorry.
Do I have to restate my name? Uh, which one?
Up above, up the end of the street with a water line situation.
Oh, it's, it's coming very well. Let's see, we're just finalizing the, the numbers with the developer and the construction costs so that we, and then they're as, trying to determine which phase or both phases they will be able to construct at this time. So it's very promising that with the numbers that came back that they should be able to do both phases. And so both streets at the same time.
Be nice having those streets tied in, won't it?
It will. It will.
You don't save a lot of driving around.
Yeah. So we'll be back to you probably next month to get a final plat approval. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number nine, consider approval of an ordinance amending the subdivision ordinance related to setback requirement in R2, R3 and MU zones.
Now, this is a side setback for PUDs in, in those three zones. Currently, the ordinance reads it needs to be 20 feet wide, the side setback on both sides of the PUD needs to be 20 feet, 100 feet back from the street. The proposal is, is to reduce that down to 10 feet in those zones.
Is that okay with the fire chief?
And I was, I recall Mr. Watson was approved of this last, last week.
Do you want to come and say anything else?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We'll start with Councilman Adams.
Aye.
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 All right. Item number 10, consider approval of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter 23, which are no longer in compliance with Utah state law.
So this is the, this comes out of Tom's request earlier this year to, for one of his tenants at La Fiesta. They came in and wanted a permit to sell beer with dinner and there was a conflict in the law and they were, they were legal legally in the country, but they hadn't gained citizenship. And so we couldn't do it then. There was a bill passed in the last legislature that fixed that. So it broadens the scope of folks that we can make that approval for from just citizens to those otherwise legal in the country. The other thing in here that is being amended is the business licenses and late fees. We just went through the current late fee structure. This is going to streamline it somewhat. We'll give them notice of their business license sometime in later December. They're, they're due every January. We'll have one late fee. It will be in January 15th. If you don't pay it, you get assessed a late fee. We're going to get rid of the second late fee totally. Just, no. The second one's going to be accelerated to February 15th. We can hope we can catch them earlier in the year. So that's the proposal.
Yes.
Mayor, I just make one quick comment?
If you state your name.
Good evening, Tom Jet. I'd just like to express this process has been absolutely amazing. It shows how one person in this country can still make legislative changes through the process of their local councils and how they follow through and how the, you know, it, 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 we've, we, many of us grew up with that cartoon. It's, it's a bill and simply a bill and the proposal and so forth. And it was, I was speaking to someone a few days ago about how amazing it is that we can, how discontent people are with the political process. But when they look deep into it and, and they follow it, watch it, they can say, wow, you know, you can, you can make a difference. And this wasn't necessarily about one organization, but this was about an entire cultural change, how we're doing things and how we're thinking and, and how things have changed from 50 years ago, when many of our rules and ordinances were written and we just were keeping up with culture and, and society. So I just wanted to say thank you for the being involved in our mayor or city manager for following up on, on this item and our legislators for pushing this thing through. It's really, really neat to watch that, watch that process. Thank you.
Yeah. And appreciation to Representative Westwood and Senator Vickers for hearing it and working it through. We appreciate that very much.
400 bills.
Are there any other questions, comments related to this? Not, can I get a motion?
Move to approve ordinance amending various sections of chapter 23.
Second. Second.
All right, we'll start with Councilwoman Hartley.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
All right, item number 11, consider approval of resolution adopting FEMA Five County multi-jurisdictional drill hazardous mitigation plan for 2017 through 2021.
So this was a very short document that I understand you've all read cover to cover.
337.
Waiting for it to be made into a movie.
Basically what it does is it has plans for, uh, the Iron County area as well as the other five counties to say what we could do to help mitigate various natural disasters. Many of the suggestions we already have in place. If we have this plan and we approve it and we're subject to a natural disaster, we can apply for FEMA relief funding. If we don't have the plan, uh, we cannot apply. So that's the stick to get us to adopt the plan.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we will start with Councilman Adams.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
We always have to wait for you to say that. We all want
It was really bizarre last week. Everyone was kind of sitting there waiting.
How do we leave?
We're almost locked here.
Did we get a second on that?
For a week.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Look at some of these